We're following the book's order. Everybody's present. Matt will be right here when he gets done. We have, we need approval of the agenda. We have one business item on there, so...
Motion to approve the agenda?
I have a motion to approve the agenda by Cheryl. I have a second by Jacob. Any further discussion? All the way over say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Carrie. Anybody for public comment?
I have no requests for this one.
Okay, so we are on new business. Post facility and Matt, I think at this point, just turn it over to you, Turner.
Give me just a second, Cheryl.
Okay.
Technology issues, I guess I can find you.
Mail.
Good call. I need to go.
One thing I can be assured about when I go to meetings, gentlemen, we don't have much here, there's always a technology glitch, somewhere. It's inevitable of all parts.
First of all, what is the goal for tonight?
I think we're going to hear a present. I'm not exactly sure if we're going to hear a presentation on a new facility from UNESCO. And I believe that they have looked at the same results we have. And I think everybody has questions, and my impression is they're all different. So even though this is a formal board meeting, discussion is going to be imperative. It's going to be your time to ask questions and get it all out on the table. So if we have a direction to go quickly to move us to a goal, we may do so. If you feel that that's an issue after the site, but it's all, I'll go for it.
And I wanted to start with that very thing. So the plan for this evening is, obviously Kevin and I are here to visit with the board about after reviewing the survey results and after being able to take a look at that, going back and putting some additional thought into the plan and coming up with a potential proposal that the board has to eventually make a decision on. There is no intent here this evening for the board to call for an election or any of that, but at the end of the meeting, I do need some direction from the board. So what I'm really looking for is something at the end of the meeting that will give the administration a direction as to what they need to have prepared for May 28th, which is next from tonight. So that's really what we're here for. Okay? Questions about that? Okay, so with that, then I will turn it over to Kevin and Kevin.
That's it.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. That was a great...
Now, before you start, this will be open forum enough that all of our members can be able to ask questions.
You tend to want, correct?
You just took the words out of my mouth. I was going to say, I was going to say while you introduced this as a presentation, what we're going to do is give you things for consideration throughout the evening, right? And then that'll provoke discussion, and then we'll give you some more stuff to discuss. And so that we'll just take a step back and we understand that you're going to ask, you're going to go roundtable with each other and that you're going to ask questions of us, so we're a resource to you this evening. But as Superintendent Bowler did say, that we have taken the results of the survey and then we have worked with the administrative team to incorporate the feedback that we got from your community, or communities, plural. So there is a revised proposal. Now, in the absence of time, there's not 10 different options to consider and so forth. What we did is we tried to listen to the survey and say, okay, are we checking these boxes? And we're pleased to provide you with that proposal that came out of multiple discussions and as well as the results of the survey. We're also going to consider, for the first time, design and construction timelines. We're going to get, if we are considering a modest referendum, let's talk about what that might entail in terms of what you might expect in a construction perspective. We're going to, I'm going to remind you subtly of the debt that's about to retire, okay? So that we talked about that a few meetings back. And again, I'm going to give you some things to consider, again, have discussion, what do you want to do, if anything, about that? And then we'll review some potential next steps depending upon, which obviously could change depending upon how the discussions go. So I put something down, but that's not that chiseled in stone or anything like that. So with that, I'm going to introduce Kevin Thuringer again to kind of walk us through what we learned about the survey and how we've adjusted the plan in response. Hand over the keys.
Thank you for having us back in again. As Kevin alluded, we've got some revised plans to walk you through, so please do stop me, ask questions while I go through this, and then discuss them yourselves as well. So those survey results, we had a great number of results, 24%, 25% of your community responded. And of that, 84% were satisfied or very satisfied with your district. And as Bill alluded, that's really good, that's higher than most. And 68% of all those respondents are favorable to a referendum. We found that $16 million is kind of that number that most of the community will back, and that includes the parents and the staff and also that non-parent, non-staff constituents. And there's really strong support for the boilers, the heating controls, the CTE renovations, and there's really good support for the community center as well as the auto spaces. So considering all of that, we had a lot of conversations and we took a look at that proposal and what could we do to this proposal to make it fit into that $16 million and still get a lot of those boxes checked. So what you see here is very similar to the plan we've been working with. We did remove the fitness center that used to be out here, the 150 square foot space. And instead, I'm going to go over to the blow-up here. We'll put a small group fitness off of that existing fitness center. So this space here is going to become the fab lab, technology piece now, correct? And so we'll still let the community know we're doing that, and we'll keep the fitness center here and have an 800 square foot group fitness room off of that space as well as a couple offices for the community head department or whoever might be working in that area. Putting the toilets and custodian storage spaces here, still having the wrestling multipurpose room that will have room for two wrestling mats within it, the four court field house, and then also providing the CTE auto addition, slightly smaller than we originally had it, but only a couple hundred square feet smaller, still plenty large for everything you're going to look at doing there. So the highlights again, we've got the four court field house. One thing I want to mention as we look at the cost of this is, in previous iterations of this plan, going all the way back to when Donalar did the estimate for you, they were considering a pre-cast structure, so concrete cast walls for that structure. To keep the budget, keep this in budget, provide all four of those courts, we're looking at doing more of a pre-engineered steel structure. On the next slide, I've got some images for you on what that might look like, and there's some options as we move through that. We've got the existing fitness center remaining, and we've got a smaller 800 square foot group fitness room, and we've got that CTE auto space. So all hands, about 40,000 square feet of new square footage. And then the renovation, of course, you don't see there for the renovation of the entire CTE space, 9,700 square feet. This also includes the sprinkling of the remainder of the middle school, high school building. There's a section that's not sprinkled. When we do this addition, we're going to bring the rest of that facility up to current codes, sprinkle that entire space. It does include ADA upgrades for four restrooms. When we do these kind of projects, we're required to make sure that we have ADA accessibility as part of that plan. There are restrooms that surround the CTE auto space that these people use that are not all updated to current ADA standards, so we'll bring those up to ADA standards as part of this project. That is a code requirement that up to 20% of your budget be used on ADA components. And so we'll do that. And then because we're saving up parking, we're going to have to expand the parking to the north on your site plan, and we're going to have to look at site water retention and grading drainage. So that, so total project costs, all your soft costs, your hard costs, everything, all in for this scope of work, is $15.1 million. Any questions before we...
Just a question about the retention. Does that mean you're going to have to have a pond?
Maybe, maybe not. Probably not wet storage. It'll probably be like a dry storage or a slow storage space, so it won't be a pond. We won't be holding water there all the time.
So will it be a green space that we can use for kids?
It's a hard one to answer. It'll be a space that's designed to slow the water just from leaving your site, okay? So when we look at this, we're going to expand the hard escape. And so typically what most cities and counties require is that whatever modifications we make, we can't increase the speed of the flow off of our site from what is existing, which often means we'll look at either underground retention, if we need to, we can put a tank underneath the new parking lot that the water goes into, it's held for time and then slowly released, or by doing like a dry basin design. So we just create some low spots in the grass in the area to the north. We can sheet flow off of the new parking lot into that, and then that'll catch it and slow the water from shedding off onto other properties of the street. So most of the time, as a dry basin design, I can't speak to how wet your soils are and how much they can retain and how long that number is. The civil engineer will do that for us and let it, but I'm pretty confident we're not looking at any ponding, we're not looking at any wet storage systems here. It'll just be a slow down, dry basin. Good question, though. Can I go?
Just a, I think I know the answer, but this came up with some of the surveys, by moving the auto mechanic to the school, there was concern on some of the surveys about, is that going to affect, you know, how are we going to keep gases or whatever?
Oh, sure.
It's right next to the fitness center.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's cold for that too, and so all of this stuff. We dropped the exhaust system down so there'll be a duct sock, basically it comes out and connects to the back of your tailpipe, so when you're running an engine, you hook that up to the tailpipe and how it goes, and we'll make sure we have proper air changes and ventilation in there. It should not be an issue.
It's just a question that I think will probably come up again.
Many, many schools that have auto shops that's connected to their buildings and, yeah, we'll just make sure we design it properly to keep the air changes, keep fresh air in. It'd be, make sure we don't have, we make sure the pressure is correct, right, so that your other spaces aren't succulent in.
It's slightly negative to the space.
Good question. So looking at the field house, again, previously, a lot was considered with the pre-cast structure, so those poor concrete walls. The budget on that is substantially higher. We can still give you a great space and something that people see as a field house. I think when community comes, they'll still see this as a practice facility, a field house facility. But what this is, is a pre-engineered steel structure. There's a lot of things we can do with this when we get into the design. You'll see some imagery here where this one, they were able to do some masonry on the lower sections of it, and the metal is above on the interior of the space. You can see here, this is actually a little bit of masonry. You still have that big steel structure on the inside. And then there's a couple different ways that those panels are done on the inside where it can look hard or a lot of times. You just see these tufted pillows, I like to describe them as. They're white and they hold in the insulation for the panels. Again, very common. Most people associate that with a field house, so it's not like something, like people aren't going to be let down, I guess is what I'm trying to describe. Another way to relate to this, and I was talking to Matt about it on the phone, is people often remember seeing pictures of the old Vikings winter park and seeing the inside of that, now that's a turf for football. But again, it's that same concept, big white structure, open, airy, they look nice, and that's what this will be, is something like that facility.
What does it expect, like lifespan of...
All depends, all depends on how you maintain it a long time, I guess. I can't, things can have, like if you drive a truck into the panels, then you've got to replace the big section of the panels. It's all replaceable is the good thing, so you can spend money to replace it. Lifespan should be, you know, 50 years. If it's well maintained and before you need to consider really doing anything to it, you should get 50 years on it.
Is the exterior completely stainless?
It depends on where we go, what we do with it, how the budgets fall when we start laying this out, what options we select. Again, if we want to do a little bit more to the interior and have something that looks more like this, then we're probably looking at just a metal exterior all the way down. In that example, they've got some slot windows, you can do windows that go up high in them. So again, if you want to add windows, then that adds the cost, so we'll have to play with those selections when we get there in design. There's a wide variety, and so we'll leave that till we get to design. But you can see that there are options where you can have some masonry at the bottom and do different things with the building.
Well, we're looking at probably a 30-foot cycle?
Probably like 42.
So and what's this, 20?
Yeah.
So it'd be twice that tall. So when they start looking at some of that, if you have the protection level, that other space is way up there. And to be cost effective, it may not be worth our time to do it, proportionately, it is way up high.
Yeah, and the height too, we can vary that. I mean, if we want to look at using this for volleyball, you need 25 feet clear underneath your structure. So again, as we work on the pre-engineered side of this, we've got to find out what the clearance is of the structure underneath the volleyball. So we might be down at 36, 38, depending on the span. We've got a long span across this, so how deep the structure members are so that we can have competitive volleyball in there if we chose to. That's really the driving factor, is 25 feet clear of any obstructions for volleyball. And that sets the height of building. So it might be 36, it might be 38, it might be 42.
So even though it may not be part of this, it's up to the floor, but we've had a lot of falls, a lot of springs, where our teams are not able to get outside. Cold springs, early falls, these guys, it's too cold out there, and the space and the height of the inside, would want to sacrifice too much of that.
Right.
40 feet with the rest of that, hopefully they can throw a football in there.
You've got to.
Or if the softball team needs to practice a little bit, or a few things like that, so...
And then as these are built, there's all the steel structure that spans between the large structure that can be used to hang nettings and screens and things like that for protection as well as your point. These facilities are built, engineered for athletic field houses.
Does your cost include furnishing the inside of the field house?
Some of it, sure. Like the basketball, the backstops, the supports for all of that, yes.
Floor?
Yes, floor, yep.
Bleachers?
Depends what you want for bleachers, but yes, we've got some budget in there for bleachers. But I mean, again, the original plan was not a minus amount of bleachers, it was a smaller amount of bleachers. So if we wanted to go with something really fancy, that was all electronic and big, we'll have to look at that. Again, options and decisions will play a factor into that. But yeah, we've got some bleacher money in there. And I think as we go through this too, and we kind of get the numbers at the end, we'll talk to you a little bit about where the numbers fall and if we want to have some FFNEs, so furniture fixtures, equipment, numbers to this as well.
Did this include the walking track also?
Yeah, walking track around the outside, correct. So again, just to recap that, the summary on it is the four courts for the field house, the group fitness area that's 800 square foot with the office and spaces, the CTE auto, the lobby, ADA toilets, concession, storage, and then looking at the renovation space as well as the sprinkling ADA upgrades, the facilities, parking lot, site water, and then to run this number out, we can also look at doing boiler upgrades. So upgrading the boilers at the elementary school and then replacing the whole boiler secondary school. And so looking at that entire scope puts us in at 15.9.
What was the difference in that, 15.1 or 15.9?
15.2 roughly, 15.1 and change.
Yeah.
Plus $700,000 for board.
It's the boilers.
It's the boilers.
So if we go to the survey, one neat thing with the boilers, there was light fixture replacement. Now, when I look at that, a lot of times efficiency can be for a lot of that. But you kind of have that work in, is there going to be something in the process of this or is that not at all? And then I get down to the plumbing fixtures and electrical panels.
Where do we, so the electrical upgrades and efficiencies and stuff, so that is already started. We actually have, some of our capital dollars are already starting. There's a segment of this building that, this summer, is going to be retrofitted to LEDs and stuff. So what we're trying to do is we just want to get a segment done, see how it goes, turns out, what our thoughts are on it, and then the plan will be to continue to move forward with that very project. I don't see that one being funded out of bond proceeds because we do have some other tools and mechanisms that we can...
For satisfaction of the public, do you have...
It will be part of a three to five year plan, absolutely, that that would be something that we...
Those are three items that were all over 2.13.
All right. So another thing to consider in this, and of course, we heard from Bill that that $16 million was probably a really good number to run, knowing what those results were from the community. Another metric that sometimes gets thrown out there by Bill is where the taxes come in and kind of keeping it around or below $100 on the household. And so you can see here, we're going to fall in between, if we look at 150, 200, I think 160 has been kind of a number that's been thrown, so we'll be under that $100 household number.
Jody, did you bring updated charts? That would be great, great time to break them off to the board. This is your financial advisor.
Good to see you guys. Pass these around, and we've decreased our interest rate a little bit because bonds have been coming in at a lot lower rates. So rates have come down this spring, and I think when we prepared those tax impact estimates for the survey, we were just a little bit higher on those. So this is where we're at today with a $16 million, actually $16 million, $90,000 bond issue, the power project cost of $16 million. So you'll see the $160,000 home is $76, or just a little over $6 a month.
Last time I did the, looked up the average home within the district, $162,000 is the number that came up for me. That number is, you know, probably going on eight or nine months old, so it may have changed a little bit, but that's where the 160 is coming in.
And you'll remember when we did your last one, our referendum, we had a little step down in the rate coming up with taxes paid in 2020, just because we knew that you guys still had some projects that you wanted to do, so this is the net increase between what you're paying now on your debt service levies and what the change would be going into taxes paid by 2020. And I have, I don't know if you guys want the chart too, you remember we looked at this a bunch of times in the past, and so...
We'll take it if you go.
Okay, sounds good. Yes. All righty. So I think the front side has left the little numbers on it, but the back side will then show you the chart that we've looked at a number of times over the years. And again, just kind of knowing that there were still some projects that you guys wanted to address in the future, we built a step down rate between 2019, 2020 so that you have a little flexibility. So that's what's helping to keep your tax impact. If you look at tax impact for other referendums that were just presented to the voters in May, you might see bond sizes and their tax impact maybe a little bit more or a little bit less depending on what their structure looks like. You just have some flexibility and build to use that step down.
So at the last meeting, seasonal residences came up. And so I'm looking at this chart and it says residential homestead, 250,000, their tax impact is 130 bucks, 250,000 seasonal resident is 138.
They don't get the homestead credit.
So this is not with the homestead credit?
This, the market value exclusion, I should call it. The homestead credit is separate because you apply for that. So there's a market value exclusion that's calculated into taxes for homestead property.
Okay, so does that really mean that the actual home gets less taxed?
Yes.
Than this?
The residential homestead gets less taxed than the seasonal property.
Because the homestead is not applied.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. That's correct. We have a nice complicated property tax system in Minnesota. So here, residential homeowners, residential homeowners and renters can apply for homestead credit. And that is the form that people complete and need to submit to apartment revenue by August 15th each year. And we've not calculated that in, but we have a little note at the bottom of the tax impact chart that we need to bet.
Let me see that. So if we take this, where the impact to Agland, and take into account the 40%, we would just discount that off of this number?
We take the 40% off.
So it is, I must have missed it.
Jody, I'm assuming we don't have any clarity or on the momentum of the increased egg credit rate? Do we have any idea?
We just looked at that today.
Oh, you did?
Shelby in our office worked on the tax committee for a number of years, so she's monitoring that and watching it. It's still in play. Whether anything will happen or not, I don't think we're...
We're hoping it's not, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have another question. So if we took into account the 40% of the Agland, is it how you have to present this that we didn't take into account the homestead credit?
The homestead credit is dependent upon people's income level, so the homestead...
So there's no way to really figure that, where the other's a straight percentage?
Right, right.
So if you have a homestead credit, if they just assume it's going to be less than this number?
Yeah, if they qualify for the homestead credit now, they'll just qualify for more. If they don't qualify right now, they might. And there's also a special property tax refund program, and I don't know if those of you who've been on the board for a while might remember the property tax website that we did for your last referendum. We also provide information related to that. That usually only helps people out the first year that a referendum is in place because it's based upon, it doesn't have anything to do with income level, but if your total taxes, not just school taxes, but if your total taxes increase by more than $100 and 10 or 12% between two years, then you do qualify for a one-time special property tax refund. So there's two refund programs that we highlight on the website when we put this together.
Don't be, I don't mean to be asking dumb questions, but the income basis is an after the fact sometime, so I see somebody, maybe that's older, not producing a bunch of income, they get a credit back. But is this the tax for a homesteaded property? So this is the tax for homestead property. The seasonal is the tax. Explain to me what the, where we're tacking the seasonals, that's my, that's my ultimate question, because I hear it all the time. Well, the seasonals are really getting hit by the taxes. I'm just not seeing it.
Well, I mean, you would have to ask someone who's baking that claim, because I don't quite know.
But what we see is right. So this is homesteaded land, this is seasonal residential, but it's not homesteaded.
Correct. And remember, seasonal rec don't pay in operating referendum or any of your referendum market value levies. So they're exempt from that. A, property owners only pay on the house garage of one acre, so you have two different kinds of school levies.
But this is impact.
But this is...
So we have a $250,000 house that somebody has homesteaded, potentially the impact is $130. They have a house out on the lake for $250,000, their impact is $138 bucks.
Correct. And they might still be eligible for refund programs, so...
Yes, I understand.
And we always remind them of that. In fact, we've been bringing the forums to meetings because a lot of people don't realize that they might be eligible for it, and we definitely want to make sure that they're taking advantage of it. If they're not already and they do qualify.
So we'll go back to the slide that we started with, taking a look at all the boxes that we got from the survey. So again, the results at the top, the three boxes we identified was, we get support for that $16 million, and so what we've got here tonight is meeting that, strong support for the boilers, heating controls and CTE renovations, so we're checking that box, and then good support on the community center, the four courts, and the auto, and so we're checking that box. So the main items that we took away from that, less the ones you spoke of with the lighting and the plumbing, but the rest of those top items, we're checking all those boxes from that survey results. And as Bill alluded to, that was his recommendation is sticking around that $16 million and checking as many boxes as we could.
So I do think it's just important to make sure everyone understands that the one, the large component of the plan previous to the survey that is no longer in play is the fitness center. The intention was to, you know, we had kind of calculated out, what is the fitness center using now with the current center, with the hallway, with the Zumba group exercise there at the end of the hall? That's how we kind of arrived at that 5,000 square feet, and that is not part of the revised plan. The only component of that that's moving forward would be that 800 square foot group exercise room. But otherwise, the rest of that fitness center plan is no longer in play with this arrangement or this plan.
So is that and the steel structure, like the two biggest components, help reduce the cost, or are there other areas, like on the lifespan of things that we're choosing or products, or...
So, okay, so multiple questions there, so I'll tackle one at a time. So the big, the big changes, as Matt suggested, is we're not renovating... So the big, the big changes, Matt suggested, is we're not renovating a space at all. So there are $0 accounted for this square footage at all. And then we're not adding on that 5,000 square feet here, instead we're just doing 800 square feet here. So that's a big change, because we're not, only not adding on, we're also not renovating the square footage. And the other big factor is it's changing from the pre-cast building we were talking about to a pre-engineered steel structure. That's the other really big item there. And then as far as longevity, the rest of this is still going to be constructed just like we've always planned. We'll look at providing as much glass and natural lighting as possible in these doors, what we can do for the fire codes, making this a really nice, large, grand lobby space where we can come in and we can gather before we come into the auditorium or before we go into any of the other event spaces. And still looking at how can we turn maybe some of this into showcase spaces. So we have not changed any of the longevity or the materials. We're still looking at masonry materials where we can. Yep.
Thank you.
Kevin, can I just ask one more thing? Let's just say that seven years down the road, 10 years down the road, the message is the fitness center is too small. How does that play into what you have on this plan?
So we would still be able to look at adding that fitness here, or we could look at what we could do to expand here. So we've got some options in the future on how we expand that. Yep, so we still got spots for it.
I just have a question from Matt here. 800 square foot exercise room, what would that be used for, Matt? Would that be the Zumba and those kinds of activities? And that's 800 square feet is good size for that?
Yeah, and also our plan would be the wrestling room downstairs would be opening up. So our plan would be to create, that would be an athletic, more of a power room. So we would actually set up the basement area for like a varsity weight room. So the louder music, the dropping of the weights, that kind of stuff. So we think that would really benefit the general public too.
That's good development.
Would you still have a cardio room out on the side then? Would that still be the same, just like that then?
Yep.
Is it looking at making the auto addition steel also?
We did not. I wouldn't, we can. If we would do that, I would still recommend that probably the first eight feet of it be some type of a harder masonry material, because you've got anyone driving vehicles, you've got kids operating vehicles. Typically, we want to have a more sturdy environment for that, just because again, longevity and protection. So even if we were to look at the top of those walls being a steel structure, that is a, bottom eight feet would be masonry.
The tech would be an option.
Yeah, it probably won't move the needle much on our estimate here, because the majority of that is still going to be masonry when you start looking at the way that the walls work and the overhead doors and the lifts and things.
If you do the masonry structure, does that help with the walls as compared to putting walls on steel structure? Because if you take the toilets plus that other room, plus the wrestling room there, you see steel buildings all the time, whether how the steel building, and then they'll have, sometimes it's an entryway, some of that kind of stuff, and then they'll put that kind of thing right along with the steel building. Once you get beyond the lobby down toward the main school, kind of, would be kind of logical to have that cement. But if we go up to those, the wrestling room, yeah, be right there. Is there an efficiency for us to have that cement instead of steel?
We'll work on that as we get through design. It's not going to be a pre-engineered building. Pre-engineered building makes sense for this pre-engineered shape, where we have the big truss pieces that go in and it's a kit of parts. When we start to get into this, you're right, we don't have to use masonry. And I'm not stating that we ever will use masonry there, we can use masonry there. There are other options. We can do steel studs, we can look at.
Well, you can look at pre-engineered. Commonly, they'll have a big space, but they'll pre-engineer everything off of it too.
Well, a lot of times those spaces off of those will be like steel stud structure. So the pre-engineered, yeah, so it would still be all structural steel, it would all be under a steel package. And those spaces that are adjoining off of it will be part of that engineered package, but the pre-engineered building is the big structure. And then the steel stud structure, a lot of times there's not even a need for columns because they'll use a structural steel stud, and that structural steel stud can carry the loads. Yeah, you're right. We just will refer to this as a pre-engineered piece, and then that can be multitude of different materials. Again, looking at wrestling, if we do go with the steel structure there, we need to be very careful what we do with the walls. We'll have to use a fire treated plywood behind like a sheet rock, just a wallboard, and then put the mats in front of that. You have high impact. You've got large boys throwing large boys around, and if they hit those walls, we need to make sure that we have the impact resistance. So the CMU is a really sturdy material that can also be used in the structural system. A lot of times it makes sense to do that. If we go with the steel system there, we'll just make sure that we design that accordingly for that impact load. So we have a lot of options there.
Another question on the CTE auto addition. So is that CTE and auto, that's a combined space?
It would be part of the, I think, and Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the idea is, is that we're moving all of these career technology education spaces together. So there's.
So they're a whole unit.
There's a link. Everybody's.
Perfect.
The career technologies is all together. I think that's the only reason we're calling it that, that, Matt?
Yeah, so I mean, it would be more of an open floor plan and stuff, and so just easy efficiency for equipment and materials and all of that thing. No, we're not going to put the welding stations next to the sodas collection. It's not how it would be designed, but it would be more of an open plan so that you can have some collaboration across all of those areas within that CTE.
This could be doors, it could be a overhead door that you can open, so we can move metal or whatever back and forth. If we're gonna take a hard part, bring it in, we're not as welded or painted or something, just have that connectivity.
Because I was, I mean, the community agreed that that is a large component, so I just wanted to see visually like where that's represented in the plan, so that, that makes sense.
Yep, it's just a connection here.
I think it's a great plan. I mean, personally, I mean, I've been looking at this for two years, along with everybody else, and I feel that the needs of the community are here. I think the plan hasn't changed significantly from what we originally wanted, which I think speaks well to what the community has said and has been consistent with. I would have thought this would have changed tremendously.
One of the reasons we talked about switching the field household too is for convenience of getting around there with trucks and that. This will kind of open that all up and make it easier for semis to come around and still get, we still have the dock at the back.
Correct. It shouldn't affect any of that.
How does everyone feel about the plan?
I guess I echo what you're saying there. It does make you meet the needs of the community, you know, without going.
I think it feels responsible.
Yeah.
I mean, these are tough economic times, I've said it before. I think this meets our needs and is responsible. I think it's something the voters could swallow, I think, more so than something else.
I'm next.
I was just gonna say, the only thing that's missing that'd be my concern is I've got two kids that are gonna be in that west wing of the elementary next year, where it was all red with air quality issues. And when you start talking about decline of cognitive function when you're in a room with lower quality air, then I wonder where the improvements to the air system might come in. Because that's not this, I don't think.
If I could join that conversation, I've been thinking about that quite a bit. Those rooms are, what, 30 by 30 generally, roughly? So they're about 900 square feet. They're not much more than a house. We're looking at this place there. Sometimes I wonder if we get so involved in having one master unit to fund, to do all of that as compared to unit additional air ventilation for each one, which could be a ton more cost effective. Maintenance could be a little bit of an issue. Maybe have more filters to replace, but they take a whole unit air replacement in a house. Now, they're not looking at the CFMs. But when I look at over here, we have an air handler occupying a whole room to try and air handle the whole thing. Maybe in that area, where, could we be looking at that, Ron? Maybe we should be looking at more independent, because most of that whole wing is 30 by 30 and a fair amount of the other side. And I, I don't think you had a problem on the other side, which used to be in the middle school.
Well, I can give a part of an answer, and you guys probably can give much more.
I agree with, I think that is, absolutely needs to be a priority at the elementary school. And that's something that, again, there's other funding mechanisms to be able to address that. So I think there's still tools to be able to go about that approach. And as far as I'm concerned, whatever project goes out to our community for a vote, that has to be addressed and it needs to be part of the master plan. So that is going to definitely be a piece of it. The other thing, I'm not in any way an engineer, but when I, when I hear about having individual systems in classrooms, I cringe at that, because I think we need to, to have it as a systems approach, so that it can be more of a system that is, is making sure that that air exchange is happening and stuff. I just see these individual units in all the classrooms. I mean, where do you stop? You've got probably 30 some classrooms at the elementary school. Do you really want to have 30 independent units running in each classroom? I think from a maintenance perspective, from upkeep, filters, all of that stuff, I see that as a monster of a task when you just have independent units running. But you guys know more about that than I do.
Well, you sound like an engineer to me. I'm not. And he's precisely right. And so the answer is, of course, you can look at a short range solution, which is to look at your high priority areas and address them with individual units. If you addressed your whole facility with individual units, it's a possibility, it's the least expensive approach. It's also the highest to maintain, and those, those systems, kind of like you asked the question about, how long will this building last? An appropriate question. Same thing with HVAC systems, when you're, when you're going in with that kind of, I'll call it that residential style approach, you're looking 15 to 20 years, and then you're going to be looking at, right down the barrel, at the same decision. Whereas if you go a little bit more holistically, again, with those units that take up a room, they are, you know, those are 40, 50 year type of life expectancy. So there's the cost of, I call it the lifecycle cost, the cost of ownership, how much to maintain and operate, because those systems are also more energy inefficient, the smaller systems, as opposed to the bigger ones, because I can't recover heat, there's a number of things I can no longer do with those. And then you probably will replace it at least twice versus the one unit, and probably three times during the time that the one unit will last you. And it's, it's not going to operate as well. And I talked a little bit about sound, lighting, and so forth. Now that said, for someone who's concerned, I've got children in those rooms, I want to take care of these issues. The district has already, we already have LTFM revenue that comes into, and I could address those high priority rooms this next summer, if you chose to. It will be part of the plan. By looking at a plan like this, I would, I would probably speak for all of you, that you're not going to turn your eyes to the needs of the infrastructure. You're just, it's part of your master plan now. We talked a little bit about a master plan. And that master plans are phased. You never do, you never do everything at once, you don't have the resources for it to do it, nor would the community support it. So that's why you break this larger complicated issue. And again, so we can continue to work with the district if there are concerns at the elementary and a half of those dozen rooms, or 10 of those, or 20 of those rooms, we can work with them on the resources you already have at your disposal to address those in the short run. And it's okay to put a band-aid on something. And I'm sorry, I probably cut you off, Bruce, I apologize.
No, it's okay. I just was looking for options there, because we have not had the discussion, nor have we seen the student population of the school increase. Okay? We are stabilized, but that's after a huge loss of students. And it would just seem like we have to be kind of careful that we make a proper analysis how much money we stick over there if that was going to move here. When I look at Wyndham, that I think is building a K25 down there, whole school, for somewhere in the 20 million range. Okay, I'm not sure that we should be sticking by six, seven million into something we have not decided a long plan. And I know that's futuristic, but it's in some of what you've talked about already. We need to get plans together for that kind of thing.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's the other important thing that this body needs to continue doing work on is what is the long range? And when I say long range, I'm talking, you know, seven to 10 years. What is the plan for Haynesville schools and particularly the elementary school? You know, I really see that there's value in having a neighborhood elementary school. I can see value in having one K12 campus. So I think it's something that, it's a communication piece, it's, we have to do our homework. But to me, making that decision is a long-term decision that, that we need to keep doing some thoughtful work on before, you know, we make a knee-jerk reaction in either way in sinking a whole bunch of investment dollars in the current facility, or making a knee-jerk reaction to say, you know what, we aren't going to sink anything in there, we're gonna plan on moving to a K12 campus. That's more of a long-range conversation that I think we need to keep working on.
Well, as long as we're going to address what Ashley brought up here, I think it was concerning to all of us, I would guess. Nobody wants something that could be negative to the kids.
Ashley, from a student, not figuring out the spot, but I will, from a student perspective, how do you feel about the plan?
I think, okay, well, like my friend group personally, I think is more like field house, like that's like a big part of it, because a lot of my friends are like in athletics. But then, at the same time, I feel like a lot of other people like are into the CTE. Like not to say that there's two types of people, but there kind of are those two types. I think that that's like a big thing. And then, I mean, I don't know. Personally, like me, what you guys are talking about, like the boilers for sure, because this, it's been so cold in school and it's, it's like ridiculous kind of. So that would just be nice to like not know if you're gonna freeze at school, if you're gonna be sweating, so I don't know, just stuff like that.
I've got another question on a different topic. Can somebody, maybe you guys, tell me the impact of losing that north field? Because I know in fall, when I drive by after I take out kids, there's always, I don't know if it's junior football, seventh and eighth grade. Seventh and eighth grade football practice there. My kids have had community ed classes on that field, and what are we gonna, what happens to that?
I think, I think the real solution to that is also about just solving the armory solution. That is a issue that has been up in the air now for a lot of years. I don't know exactly when, but, you know, I've been in contact with the, the people in Dallas about what that buyout is. There are funds in the budget in order to do that buyout. And so I, I really see the grander, larger picture of how do we recoup those practice fields is realistically that that armory is going to be green space, is what that armory is going to be. The current equipment shed is also going to be green space. And then if the auto shop were relocated to a new structure attached to the building, then the current Land Trans building would really become our buildings and grounds, storage for the trucks, the plow, the snow removal equipment, all of that stuff. You know, there's some value in that too, because I think we could, with some minor adjustments to how we are heating that Land Trans building, we could actually turn the back half of that building into cold storage, and we wouldn't even have to heat that entire structure like we're currently doing, and just heat the front half of that structure. So I, I think all of those are kind of in play for the, the, the end solution. Again, when it gets into that kind of design phase and knowing exactly what is that water retention look like, what do all, how do all those pieces come together, then I think we can get some clarity on exactly where are those junior high practices, where are the PE classes going to go for that green space that they're, that are using? But that's kind of how I see it.
Not that, then, like what would a timeline, and maybe you guys are still going to talk about timelines, what would a timeline be for? I mean, how long would they be out of the field?
Well, we can talk about that in the, you got to talk construction timelines a little bit.
Yeah, so we'll talk about construction timeline, maybe not directly to the field replacement, but that'll all tie into it as we work through this timeline and the design phase. That'll be part of that timeline. All right, we're going to jump back through these to get us back where we were. Good conversation so far. And so now we're at the timeline, so good segue. So this is a discussion that we have with all districts as we get to this point with fall referendums in August and November. As we get to this point with fall referendums in August and November, they're both fall referendums, it's the same timeline, believe it or not. So we like to bring these up as considerations. These are just some ideas and some options on how that timeline might look for you guys as we move forward. I know Kevin's had this conversation already a couple of times this spring. And so again, just throwing some options out there for discussion. I want you to discuss with us, discuss amongst yourselves. Maybe neither of these solutions is where you guys fall, but it's something we want you to consider tonight. So option number one, we'd be looking, in both these options, we're looking at the August referendum. Option one, in May, you guys resolve on that August referendum. And once we pass that referendum in August, we begin design. So from now until August, we work with you guys on community outreach and marketing efforts and getting them involved, engaged in what this project is. And then once that passes, assuming, you know, we listen to Bill and the Niscosis plan for the survey, we begin designing in August. And then that design process takes us into a spring bid. And so when we do a spring bid, we hope to start construction maybe midsummer. And then we can complete that project sometime late fall for the renovation sections. And then mid to 2021 for the remainders, for that addition piece, the actual ground up build of the four courts and the auto spaces. So the pros to that is there's no general capital fund risk in that we wait till the referendum passes and then we start designing. And so the funding would be available for everything. The cons in that is if we go to late spring, we bid in late spring, a lot of those good contractors are already bidding their work in the winter and they're on projects. That leads to a risk of higher costs, which leads to maybe a risk of not starting construction. Maybe there's some value in engineering that has to happen for budget concerns. And those best contractors are already on other projects. Another con would be there's probably no spaces ready for the fall of 2020.
So why wouldn't we have the option to build early in 2020 instead of midsummer? So construction hopefully commences midsummer 2020.
Yep.
So that would be this year.
So that would be hopefully next year. Yeah, so like fall, July.
Why would it have to be then? Why wouldn't it start in May or as soon as kids are old?
Good question. And so to walk you through a little bit of that process on getting that designed. We start designing in August and I think the vote is mid-August. So really, we'll get the ball rolling at the end of August with design. We'll have a design team. Some of you will sit on that. We'll have some members of the community and the school athletics. A bunch of people will be on our design team. We'll start those meetings and designing this building with our mechanical, structural, civil, all those people, retention, looking at timelines, who do we display? How does that affect school? That's a big factor, school starting when that starts. And then we also have to start thinking about the weather, right? So we'll start those planning pieces in end of August, early September. We'll go through that design process and we'll look to bid. Usually it's about, you know, six to eight months. So we'll try to keep it tight, move along. So we'll be bidding in spring, meaning probably in May. So we look at releasing those documents to the public to bid for the statutes in Minnesota in May. Usually a four to six week bid period. So if we issue in mid-May, we're looking at end of June to get those numbers back from those contractors. We get those numbers back, we want a week, two maybe, to have you review them also. You'll open those bids publicly and open. And then you want to review them. You got to vet to make sure that those are good bids, are good numbers, add them all up. And then we'll award contracts. That usually takes another week or two to award the contracts. So if we're opening them in June, looking for a week or two, we might get to end of June, early July, awarding those contracts. So we award the contracts to those contractors the last week of June. Now, they've got to stabilize. They've got to get their equipment on site. They've got to get their site trailers. They've got to get barriers and construction things ready here at the school. And then we start the shop drying process. And with them, we usually require that once we give them a contract, they've got two to four weeks, depending on the lead times and the stuff, to get a shop dries. So they get us all the shop dries. Now, the pre-engineered building is going to be even longer because they've got to get that design to us, they've got to get the structural things to us. Then it's got to go to the city for review and approval to get that permit issued on that piece of the project. At the same time as they're doing that, I'm doing that with my contractors, getting them their permits to start. So we're going through the city with all of those. That takes a couple of weeks for them to review it, give us comments, issue that permit. Okay, so really, we're not looking at starting, stabilizing until probably the third week of July.
So what you're saying, if we had the vote in November, we wouldn't be starting this project probably until 2021. If we had the vote in November, we wouldn't start it until 2021. If we have the vote in August and we're already midsummer and we let the bids in May, so if I can just logically look at this, most of the contractors have already have the whole summer planned out.
You're right. We have another option still.
We're waiting for the last one.
But they're all good points. And so walking you through this process and timeline is going to be the same. We're just going to, you know, bump it back a couple of months, about three months in time when we get to option number two. So to go back to that timeline and option one, we're probably looking, you know, end of July to really start construction. So even if we're really favorable and we're in the second, third week of July and we can speed that process up, our kids are coming back to school. We're having open houses at the end of August. Practices are starting for kids for football and volleyball in the fall. So now we're working around those students to try to start renovating and tearing apart that existing building. That's why we're probably not opening for school in fall of 2020. That's why we're probably looking at, you know, if we can get in there and quickly work, maybe like November, December for those renovated spaces instead of August. And then why does that mid-21 come in? Because we got, then we're working on the schedules and safety with students coming back and teachers coming back and occupying spaces. And then we've got winter and we don't know, is it going to be an early winter or a late winter? I can't tell you that, so I'm using mid to be safe. If it's favorable season and we don't have a lot of snow or ice or cold weather, things go a lot quicker and smoother. But it could be ugly like this year. I think we had really cold, really wet, and we're still wet and cold. You just don't know. So looking at a second option then. Any more questions on option one? That's a good question, Bruce. Okay, so second question, we can resolve here in May to go to August, but we begin design now. And so what that looks like is we can start the design process now. We'll start those groups with you now, get that process rolling. And we can bid late fall, probably like November. So we get out in front of all of those contractors. They're still hungry, they're still looking at building their pipeline. The construction then would start, hopefully, again, we don't know what the winter's going to be and when the thaw is going to happen and how wet it's going to be. Hopefully, we'll start that summer 2020 with renovations and the new additions. And we can complete that renovation space for fall classes in 2020. And the new addition would be done as early as early 2021. So maybe, you know, right around January, maybe mid-basketball season, maybe late basketball season, but a time for spring activities to get in there and start using it for practices when it's still wet outside of 2021. So the pros, it's an early bid day. We're going to get good numbers, we're going to get those good contractors bidding it. They're hungry for the work at that time. The construction will start, again, because we got those hungry. We got a lot of contractors looking at work in November, December bidding periods. The renovated spaces, like the boilers. And the renovation spaces will likely be completed for fall of 2020 classes. And then the cons on that is the general capital fund's at risk. So if the referendum fails, then there would be fees associated with the design work that happens from then until August referendum. So a lot of information there, kind of quickly.
Might add, there's a third option again too, is that, you know, push it some. And again, we were working under the assumption that we were looking at a 2020 construction, you know, bleeding into 2021, as Kevin alluded. And again, if you go at it and to say, I just want to see if my referendum has passed, but I don't commence with construction until 2021, that's also an option as well. The downside to that, if I were to do extemporaneous speech on that, the con is you're looking at a full year of escalation then. If we don't construct in 2021, and that's the idea, we are, we're probably going to have to escalate that fifteen point nine million to fifteen nine point, times one point oh five, one point oh six, whatever the conditions are at the time. Last year, we ran at times, we were, as I shared with this board before, about nine percent, eight point eight percent escalation. So this allows us to avoid an escalation and to get at those spaces quicker. But if it feels rushed, option three could be, well, let's just time out here. Let's just, let's construct it. I don't want to take risk with my general fund and start design now. The way you get at the construction in 2020 is to start design now. And that's just the downside of a fall referendum. Many, there was a lot of referendums just now in May. And you probably saw the results of some of those referendums. Why they're doing that? So they can decide, they can start designing now. And then they can, they can have their bid packages out on the streets in November, December. And how we can get on the streets in November, December with them is to take on a little risk. By the way, that $200,000 that we've identified, I'll spend a lot more than that. This is us taking risk with you. If you were to say, I don't like UNESCO, that number could be quite a bit different. But this is us taking risk with you because we feel like this is a successful outcome. We do believe this referendum will pass. If you stay within the guardrail set forth by school perceptions, and on a couple of slides earlier, we were checking those boxes. And if you were to recall some of the conversation you've had with school perceptions, if you follow their recommendations, they're nearly a thousand percent, to use baseball term, a hundred percent or batting a thousand. I mixed my metaphors there. They, when you don't, one example is Lester Prairie. Lester Prairie started to creep over the recommendation. They lost by, I think, four bolts, five bolts. Ouch! And all they did is they said, well, you know, we can squeeze a couple more things in there. So this, you haven't squeezed a couple more things in?
I don't know for us spending $200,000 in advance on the vote is a practical thing.
I understand.
We already know the committee. I just thought, we have two years with all this administration they're talking about to come up with a plan very similar to what we talked about for a majority of this right up. Matt has been working his tail off, kind of trying to work the CTEs and all that in. I look at your timeline and it doesn't appear that we benefited ourselves with our advanced information as compared to somebody that maybe didn't start on this two years ago. And I thought it could just be faster.
Go ahead. I do just want to remind everybody that we did have a conversation about moving forward in December. And the decision by the district in December was that they wanted the new board to make that decision and to hold off and not move forward with that. December is something that would have put us in a position to be having a May election. And so by moving that back a little bit, part of what that decision was, and I'm fine with the decision, but part of what that decision is is it closes the May window and opens in August window is what it does. So I agree with you, Bruce. I'm not sure how I feel about the $200,000 at risk. I have mixed feelings on that. But I think that's something that we can, I need to digest options one, two and three, and we can have some more conversation about it. So would you recommend, would your recommendation be number two? I mean, is that the one you're most comfortable with or?
We take our direction from you. Again, we're, we're, we take, no, we don't have a horse in this race. We're going to do, we're going to work like heck. The drawings, all up until this, this whole package of time have been something called conceptual in nature. And again, Kevin's already alluded to all the work that happens. We need to elevate the level of design, first to schematic, then something called design development, and then ultimately construction document. And there's a whole bunch of technical things. I don't, we don't move any slower than any architect. Right now, all of the drawings are conceptual in nature. And if we made all the decisions, we can go a lot faster. But you wouldn't be very happy if you didn't get any say in how your buildings turned out, whether there's masonry to this level or to this level or none at all. And we can make, if we could go quickly, but we have to involve you. And now we're getting down to where actually you become the breaking element here. Because we have to get a design team together to make decisions in a group probably about this big and to make decisions on things like colors and materials and so forth. And I would like to say we could go faster. I don't think anyone does though. And that's been our experience.
Well, my slowing it up, I think, has probably not hurt us so far. We gotta come up in December, but we want to open that this month.
It was a whole different plan.
It was a whole different thing. We have come up this month. Plus, we have surveyed the community to get a feel of where they're at. For me, it was just a surprise. I just thought it could happen a little faster.
I'm going to disagree. I'm going to disagree with you on that because I think it's not a high risk because like we've looked at, we have a good chance of passing it. We have time to educate about it. And I don't like putting it off a whole nother, I mean, that's maybe me being selfish with kids in school right now, but I don't, I don't see why. I think people have commented, what is the holdup? Let's get this going. And it's going to take a while, even once it's going. Why not get a jump on it and, you know, get the stuff rolling for next year? I mean, it's already not even going to start until a year from now.
Based off of a $16 million project. So we're looking at the timeline of bidding, what could be? I know it's a tough question, but what could be the estimated cost increase on going late to bid? Like maybe what is that different?
I'll take that one. One of our, one of our UNESCO employees is actually a board member in Iowa, Osceola, Iowa. So if you want to kind of fact-check me. And they went to, was it a May bid?
Yep, it was just, what was it? Yeah, first week of May?
It was either April or May bid. And I think it was about this budget, about 16 million. Correct me if I'm wrong.
You're right, about 16.
And they were $3 million over budget. And it wasn't that, they had, they had firms like ours, and we actually were not the firm, but they had firms that were estimating it and had another firm to bottom line estimate it. They came up with the same number. The problem was they went out to bid in May. And that was $3 million over budget. So they tabled it. They're not going to construct it if they don't have $3 million. So they're going to go to construction in 2021 and they'll be better off versus the $3 million by taking one year of escalation. So that's the risk of going out in May.
Right, and so that's kind of that $200,000. When you put it in context of what cost will be in the end, I think that's something we're, what I'm trying to get at.
But we spent $200,000 and for some reason, it doesn't pass. Okay? We spent $200,000, we've got to come out of the fund because we still owe $200,000. In our general fund, that's a real hit. We have spent a lot of time trying to build our access value up to where it is to try and make the end of operating the referendums. But then it goes from a project cost in the event of the vest to a budget item right out of Panis, Pan for operation of the city.
And you don't have to, if I may, one more introduction, my apologies if I'm out of line. But we put it in there slash capital fund, and there can be actually other slashes as well. So it doesn't have to come from the unrestricted dollars of a general fund. I mean, it can be, come from a variety of sources.
But the tax rate was put in there first place.
Yeah, and I was going to, and I was going to say, so you don't take an educational hit that impacts the kids on, you know, all in one year. You can defray that over time. You could, you could do some sort of leverage in a finance vehicle to defray that over time.
I see where we keep getting tired of delays. Bruce, I got it now, it's not tired of delays. I think people just want to get this going forward. I think we have a pretty positive reaction towards our surveys so far. I think people would probably appreciate more of a design than anything else, you know, things to look at. I mean, I think people would appreciate that. I don't think people want to give a delay any further. I realize there's that risk of $200,000. But if surveys are what they are, it's overwhelmingly positive.
And just starting to design ahead of vote improved the opportunity.
Exactly.
People now know what they're getting instead of...
They know, exactly. They have this idea of what they can look like rather than this...
If you feel already successful and then...
Yeah.
Honestly, if this fails, we've got bigger problems, right? $200,000. I mean, really.
And I just want to reiterate, and you guys can tell me if I'm wrong here, but I don't think this decision needs to be made here tonight.
Right. There's option three.
Uh, it's either tonight or Tuesday.
Yeah, we, we still pass the referendum in August. But then we're going to go, we're going to take our time and we're not planning to go to bid in May.
After three minutes of...
We'll go out to bid in, probably earlier. We'll probably go to bid in October or, we'll go early. It's 2021 construction. We'll try to defray some of the escalation costs by getting out there super early, but it will cost more.
And Jacob, to your point too about, both of your points about starting it earlier is one of the benefits is that our design team is working on it. We can provide drawings and renderings and more graphics that are more what you're actually going to get to the public. We can roll those out during the referendum phase where we'd be really schematic in what we would show the public. We don't want to overpromise.
Sure.
If we didn't start that process.
We end up with citizens still confused on what they're going to get for $16 million. And does that confusion cause a lesser opportunity for success? $200,000 is still a lot of money, Adam.
Yeah.
It's a time change.
I get that.
And you were at 50%, okay? It's going to take 51% to pass it. But I think we have to anticipate that somehow you're gonna have to get somebody below the 50% number.
Well, I think design would help so much with that, don't you? I mean, to understand, to have this, at least something to go off of, to educate the buildings, I think they might feel a little bit more comfortable with that personally.
Well, we do have at least enough to tell people.
Exactly. But again, with that number two, you have that right there as another tool for your thinking.
While we're talking about this, I'd like to get in the recording. What are we doing with the softball program? What are the plans for there?
So the softball is not planned in this with the bond proceeds. There is $200,000 right now set in our LTFM budget for 2021, which I believe, at least when it was placed in that year, I thought it would work well with, if the bond did pass and the construction that would be going on, it would be following a very close timeline to that. So that is really the intent at this point, is to be able to use LTFM dollars to renovate our current softball complex.
Thank you. I know the board is aware of this, but I wanted to bring to the public also.
So when would we have to make a decision on this? By the next meeting, or what?
Well, and again, I'm not gonna speak for UNESCO, but I think that people need to think a little bit about these two options. I think that I need to be able to speak with UNESCO a little bit more, and we need to be able to talk about this a little bit more. But realistically, if the board, the first order of business is, where is the board at with this project, and is the project gonna move forward? When we tackle that issue, then I think we can have a discussion about where is the full board on the timeline of this construction? I am perfectly fine with having the board address the actual referendum components on May 28th. And if we're calling for an election and doing the resolutions to do that, great. Then I think we can come back in June and have the conversation about options one and options two. And maybe what needs to happen is, you know, if we make that decision in June to go with option two, then we need to have UNESCO roll up the sleeves and get to work.
You're right. I know, right?
Well, I mean, that's the bottom line, is they're working for us essentially. So let's, let's make sure they understand where we're at.
I think like, to really analyze these two options to see what their risk assessment is. Like really what, is that a risk or not? And I think by, depending on how you lay the numbers on, you could say not do the $200,000 is a greater risk. And so, like, you know what I mean? Lay in that one and say, what risks are we looking at based off of the data that we know based off of reference passing, like, where do we fall so that we can really know? You know, 'cause I hate even saying it's a risk, because it might be more of a risk to not do it. We don't know yet. Does that make sense?
I would agree. I think you're spot on.
You're spot on.
I think you absolutely know, the only thing we know for sure is that $200,000 that's in parentheses, we know that that's a risk. But we do not know if the other side of that risk is a million dollars, or $2 million, or $100,000.
Right, we need to know that.
Exactly. We, we need more information before we're gonna make that final decision.
Yeah, so we bring all these things up as consideration. And I take that back from you again. That's a little bit of shoot the messenger, I get it. That's maybe a little bit of emotionally a letdown that if you could pass a referendum in August, it just makes intuitive sense that we can start construction right away in May. The reality is, again, as the design process does take six to eight months, as Kevin has alluded, we, and again, we'll move as quickly as you do in that process. We're gonna be constrained, as any architect, engineer would, by trying to get all of these professional disciplines involved to come up with all of the documents necessary to bid that project. Again, I think I brought this one up early in April again. And again, this is kind of, it takes a little bit of a tangential relationship away from the bond referendum. But this is, as a reminder, you are looking at retiring some debt. Jody already kind of talked about the net effect, if you will, of retiring some debt. And again, my, in my understanding, is that's, that's your debt structure. But Jody, could I get you to confirm that? Does that look about right to you?
What year are you starting with there?
That says 2019, so our current is here in 2019.
Fiscal or past?
This is, this is fiscal, paid 2019.
I'm not sure, we'll have to figure out what you have included in there then.
Okay, yep. And so we'll, we'll review this with elders, but my understanding is that we are retiring some debt levy. And again, yeah, if, you know, we're looking at a 2019 referendum. And part of that is that net effective taxes is a little bit lower. If that were to fail, again, we talked about the hopeful negative event of that, you know, it does create several options. And of course, the first option is do nothing. And again, with do nothing, again, now I'm a little bit over my tips again, if I have that debt schedule wrong. But this is the discussion that we have currently.
Kevin, do you wanna go back to that debt schedule?
Please.
So just so the board's aware, and Kevin, you can correct me if I'm misstating the graphic. So the first part there is our LTFM dollars. The district brings in about $380,000 or so roughly with LTFM.
Correct.
The yellow or the gold is that, it's our lease levy. So right now, every year, we're leasing hockey space and gymnastics space to the tune of about $15,000-ish. And so that's what that next part represents. The blue then is actually our two existing bonds, one of which rolls off on December 31st. Then we've got five more years of principal and interest on the second bond. And then it's gonna roll up again at the end of that calendar year.
Correct.
So in my, when I do the math and I look at that, I say that that's an accurate depiction of what we have going on. What's different is, we, I don't typically look at the LTFM piece as a component of it.
Right, but it's levy, right.
What's that?
But it's levy is my, was my point. You're right, you could almost, you could almost put the chart starting here.
Yeah, if it was public like that, you shouldn't have LTFM on there. Because it's not debt. They have an issue with, they can issue bonds with LTFM program, but they haven't.
Right. Yep, so we could almost have, this is the zero scale. As you can see, that doesn't change over time.
That I manage to view.
I think I'm, I think I'm... So again, there's debt about to retire in a two-step tier again, if you recall. And again, talked a little bit about this. If this were to fail, there is, it creates these possibilities. You know, and you could do nothing, right? You could allow that debt to retire. And what I said is that taxes are gonna drop. Again, this isn't precise, and this assumes, this makes a lot of assumptions, and I disposed of that to you before. But taxes are gonna drop on a homestead, on agricultural property, and so forth. A strategy often employed by your financial advisor about around districts around the state is to manage tax rate, to manage tax levels. So that, because sometimes when you give it back, it's hard to get back. And so that's, that's kind of the theory. And again, if you were to take a look at kind of where you're at in taxation right now, it's gonna drop you down into, again, to maybe one of the lower taxing areas in the, or in your peer group. And again, BBE currently is looking at a November referendum. So and again, if you were to take a look on the agricultural side, same thing. The argument is that we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna be a lower taxing district. Constituents will love that, but sometimes that you have needs here at the district. So that's, that's a do nothing, is that taxes go back to the taxpayers. That's a good thing. The bad thing is your needs remain. And then you've lost a little bit of your alcoholic dry powder, if you will, to fund building improvements. The next thing is, maybe you just failed by four, seven, 10, 20, 100 volts. You could revise that referendum and go again in the spring. Okay, you could go back out in April or May. And I don't know, I think are those eligible election dates, April or May of 2021?
February, April, May, August, November.
Thank you. So in that scenario, and then go again scenario, debt did retire, taxes dropped. Again, you could survey the community probably and say, "What didn't you like?" What, you know, we listened to you the first time, we gave you a proposal, what didn't you like? Again, we could, again, we could adjust and try to align with the community, and it would be a new proposal, probably less expensive. Usually one of the reasons referendums fail is that it was at a financial level they couldn't support, or they were unpopular priorities that you gave them. We tried to listen, but even though it might be less expensive, it might have more tax impact relatively. You know, when they look at their statement, "How much is this ballot gonna affect my taxes?" The net, because you retired debt, is gonna seem, even though it might be a less expensive proposal, it's gonna seem like more tax impact. A third option, if you wanna look at it this way, is that perhaps we look at maintaining that levy. Again, I think we're gonna retire about $400,000 worth of levy. So what we, one of the ways that we could do that is we could look at some of our levy authorities, long-term facility maintenance, lease levy, maybe a tax abatement. One of your levy authorities to maintain your tax, your levy, and then again, run the referendum in the spring. So an option there again is, although it's very similar in nature, we would maybe put something in effect on this year's levy to wrap that tax, to maintain the tax rate levels. Again, we'd probably still survey the community, what didn't you like? We'd adjust the proposal. Okay, do we have it right this time? And then you'd go up with that new proposal. It probably would be less expensive, and it would have less tax impact because you maintain your current tax levels. So that has, that has those benefits. So I, I threw up this before and said, hey, one of the options is to have kind of a contingent LTFM. We've done this with other districts. You pass an LTFM project. If the referendum passes, you just say, "I'm just kidding, I don't need that." And you under levy, or you have the Department of Education before September, before they run the preliminary levy certification to say, "Nope, timeout, I'm just, I'm gonna revise my LTFM proposal." And if the referendum fails, not only you've got that wrapped in place to protect your tax position so that you can pass that bond referendum if you decide to go back out after it again. So it's kind of like, kind of position it as a safety net. You may use it, you may not use it. Hopefully, you'll never use it, but you have it in place to protect your bond referendum should the referendum fail. So again, I call it a contingent LTFM. That could easily be a contingent lease levy. It could be, although that might be harder, maybe a tax abatement. LTFM's your, probably your easiest lever to pull. And what you might do with that money is you might, you might throw it into the elementary and some of those indoor air quality issues.
It would have to be health and safety project.
It would have to be health and safety project, yeah.
In order for the strategy to work.
Yeah, exactly right. And that's why it was like, maybe the indoor air quality issues at the elementary might be a good place.
And you know, with the August referendum, that's kind of the media, but they got some time to react to that.
Exactly. Yeah, so you could, you would advise the Department of Education in advance of their preliminary levy certification, "Don't need the LTFM," or, "Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna keep that plan in place." The thing is, and I think I have a slide on this, I haven't reviewed these for a while, that the Department of Education requires your LTFM plan. You'll approve your LTFM plan by July 31st, and submit it by July 31st. So if you want that safety net in place, you'll just put it in by July 31st. And then finally, you know, the option is, that really didn't succeed, that referendum. It wasn't popular. And the public spoke, and they said, "I don't really like that idea, four courts and all that stuff." And then you say, "Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna address that. I'm not gonna come back at that referendum any longer." And then you, and then Matt will hand out later to you the other side of the master plan, there's some of the infrastructure issues. We've got that, we've got a prepared report for you, and you might tackle things like infrastructure, and then we'll address space later. And what that could look like is you'll choose the magnitude of infrastructure investment. Perhaps you'll consider asset condition, learning environment, operational efficiency in that process. Again, we could use, we could use a contingent LTFM approach again. We could put a project into place and then just exercise that levy authority. We'd probably still wanna understand what went wrong in that field referendum, a post-referendum survey like we've been doing before. And then we'll use that information to consider when we address space needs or what space needs we address in the future. So that was a lot of information. Think of it as, nothing I have to decide tonight. Nothing I have to decide on May 28th next week. Nothing I have to decide in June, or even, you know, for most of July. But if you do want to kind of that safety net, that contingency, that LTFM contingency by July 31st, just make a decision on it. And those are just some, some things to consider again. So just wanted to get that out there in this forum, so you're, you've got all of the balls in the air as you're trying to go to sleep tonight, "Oh my goodness, what am I gonna do next Tuesday?" You've got a few things to consider. So next steps, this is, again, I've got another document too, which is, which is from elders too, which is a little bit more detailed than what I'm gonna show you. So your superintendent has all the blocking and tackling, all the things that need to be done in advance of an August referendum. I kind of broke it down like this. We're a little behind here, and so here we are today. So if one actually here, we should have already submitted a review and comment to the state. Now, we might ask for special exception if we, if we're gonna do a quick... So on the 28th, probably a couple of them are mandatory, if you're gonna run the referendum. So obviously, you would, you would, on the 28th, if you said, "That is what I wanna do," you would authorize a bond election. And, and your financial advisor will work with bond counsel, and they'll get you all the appropriate resolutions and everything like that, so you have something to pass on that day. At that same point, we probably need to submit a review and comment. And so we've gotta get on that because there is, there's some timing here. It kind of comes back into later on. In fact, one of the things we have to do is, is before the election. Right now, this is one of your board, it's actually a week before your board meeting. You have a board meeting scheduled on August 13th. I said before, maybe what we'll do is change that board meeting because the Department of Education statute requires us to have a public meeting relating, or to review the commissioner's review and comment response. So we have to do that in advance of the election. And we probably won't get our, now that we're submitting in here, we probably won't get a review and comment a whole lot earlier. In fact, we have a date, we have to publish the review and comment by the 24th. So sometime between the 24th and August 13th, we have to have a public meeting. And this is the date where we have to publish the review and comment for the public's consumption. That's a lot of stuff, and this doesn't show up very well on the screen, but there's a few things that the board has to consider. Again, submit the review and comment, a bond election. You'll decide at some point, maybe next week, maybe three weeks from now, maybe not at all, to engage a professional services firm to start designing. Again, that was that first option, one option, two, and ultimately option three that you'll consider. And after that, then we, if you wanna go forward with that, with that referendum rather, then, you know, the referendum support kicks off. And that's when, you know, if you choose UNESCO to support you, we'll lock arms with you. And we've got a whole referendum team. We actually have a 12-week process. We're gonna compress it just a little bit. And in and of all, you pick up and your community. And things like constituency, like advocacy committees, yes committees, we'll, we'll work with the district and its informational campaign. Our design teams will create fun graphics and that sort of thing to support you in that process. But with tactics, strategies, outreach strategies, we'll be able to support that. And then ultimately, there's a number of, again, blocking and tackling things that we'll do. One thing I have here again is if you do want the safety net of the LTFM, that by July 31st, you need to put that in place too, your safety net of LTFM. And that's what I have for you this evening.
Bruce, if I could add one thing, since as Kevin was presenting, I was thinking a little bit about your concerns on the timeline and design. And we said, you know, kind of six months, eight months is a good design timeline. I can do it faster. I can, I can put my team to work. We can do it in three to four months, and we can get it on the streets. But what that means is, it means it's gonna be very rushed for you. It's gonna be very rushed for your district, your administration. There's not gonna be a lot of time to review, comment, make decisions. The process we like to run is really a nine-month, and we're gonna say, "I can do it in six to eight." With you guys, probably every two weeks, instead of like three to four weeks. We just meet really regularly. And I like to have you guys have options, right? The whole way along, we have ideas, opportunities, options. We'll bring you ideas, what this space could look like, maybe two or three different ways it could look, and materials. You say, you know, "We could do this all CMU, and this is maybe what it means, and here's kind of a cost estimate. We could do it in studs, here's what that means." Give you the opportunity to inform what that building looks like. Conversely, we could step back and say, "Well, we can do this in three months." Because you could find an architect who will do it for you in three months. What that means is we go to the drawing tables, and we give you a product for your budget, and we kind of check in with you along the way. And we can do that for you if that's what you would like. Not, not what I recommend for a school district. Making sure that you're involved and engaged, and you get what you want. But it is possible for UNESCO.
And I said that, yeah.
We can turn it around. It's just not a good process, but we'll, we'll do it. So I just wanted to throw that up to you as you question that process. It's possible.
I think we could find something in the middle of that too.
Well, I don't see it as maybe a complex bit in comparison to, I could see building a middle school where you would have lots of other issues. We are building a space, we're making a place for the auto center. We're doing some remodeling in the CTE area, the lobby area. Obviously, people will have, that are more decorators than myself, might have other ideas on how that's supposed to look.
Renovations and additions are much more complex and have to be...
the new construction. So I mean, I think we've got to do a lot more investigation on these system additions. Make sure we can tie it together. So there's actually a, a good chunk of time that's spent in renovations and additions that you can avoid on a, a new build.
That's it. Good point. Good point. It's, you know, some of the remodeled spaces are CTE nature and that sort of thing.
So there may be more alternatives. So really what we're down to is we have, on the 28th, we're going to have another school board meeting. We as a board have to be pretty much have an idea of how we want to proceed. I didn't hear a whole lot of objections to the plan. Personally, I thought, I happened to like it when you twisted the gem. Makes logical sense to me. So our issue is that's what we have. We have to give Matt the direction to move forward. So I'm sure that has to do, are we comfortable at the price tag if this is coming in? For what we are going to accomplish, are we accomplishing the things that, in my mind, the things that the public wanted us to be looking at, some which were kind of a surprise to me truly, but we need to look at. They told us what they wanted. And then once we authorize the vote, we have lots of things that can take place between them and, and the actual, I need some input from everybody on your thoughts.
Do you feel comfortable to make a motion at this time? Or are we asking for, do we still need further discussion? Are we open to?
So I'll make a motion in a second and then it can be up for further discussion before you move on.
So I'm, I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
And help me through this one so that we need to empower the administration to be prepared to come back with recommendations for what the resolution would be on the 28th.
Yep. So, so what I'm, I'm hearing here, and you tell me if this isn't what the intent is. What I'm hearing is you would like the administration to go back and prepare the appropriate documents and resolutions for the board to be able to call for an August election representing the project that was presented with the price tag that to exceed $16 million.
Correct.
Okay.
So we have motion in a second. And now we have for the discussion. Good luck to you.
I think this does address the issues that our community brought to us. It pretty much addresses everything that they wanted. I appreciate the input by Matt Lekhousen on the fitness center. I know that has switched around several times, but it sounds like everybody is going to be happy with that. And I know they got a lot of input from the public that has been using the fitness center before he made some of these recommendations. I do think it, it addresses everything that we were looking for. Maybe even a little bit more, but not much more than what we originally thought about. And the CTE is covered pretty well. I like that. I do like the court gym. I don't think the court gym would help much. I don't think that would address any of our issues once we brought gymnastics back. I don't think our public would appreciate the court addition. The cost of it would be pretty much worthless to us. I kind of agree with you. We should move forward at least with a vote and make the decision to go forward or not.
I have a comment.
Everything along with that, then with the discuss to using the LTFM dollars for softball upgrades, the air quality, the other issues, how to figure out that we want to make sure we can take care of that are not necessarily broken to this project, but, but using the creative funding that we have available to us there to address those issues. Because those are concerns. They're not concerns just for us as we have children in elementary school, but for, for general public as well. It's something that we need to make sure we look at, take care of. We even opened a discussion over the, you know, five, 18 years of what, what are we doing with elementary school and how's that, how's that going to affect our community when we're looking at? So I think, I don't want anybody to feel like we're ignoring issues in elementary school in order to take care of needs within, within the community with this, with this project. That we are going to, we, you know, after ideas and abilities to take care of those things. So important, just as important.
I think 69 is a nice number. You know, it's certainly not one of the higher, higher numbers that we had seen or thought about. It's, it's an attractive number. I think that, I was repeated, it's hard financial times. Just can't get away from that. And I think this, what we're getting to the 16 million is, is pretty fantastic. And I think working with UNESCO in partnership could make things very promising for our district. I've been very pleased with what I've heard, all the presentations, all the hard work they've given us. I think they're an invaluable partner to have work with us and guide us over this finish line, hopefully for a positive result for a referendum. So I, I'm, I'm very comfortable with this. And I think this is a very responsible number.
Well, I'd say we've sifted this through the last two years and we've shaken it and whatever. And this is what we've come up with. I think if we don't, why would we wait any longer? What else are we going to do? We need to move ahead.
And I would hope that the public would especially take this last week before it goes to, I mean, don't wait until it's already set in stone as a vote coming up. Take this last week. If you've got questions or issues to contact the board or Matt. And I mean, like you say, it's been going on a while. If you've got any, anything else to say about it, do it now and let's get it all out there so we can get it.
Well, we're going to say a modest.
Well, for sure. And it's not like they haven't heard about this. I mean, just this week, it's in the front page of the papers that continually, you know, published. I mean, it's not like this should be a surprise to anybody. I mean, you'd have to live under a rock, I mean, not to know what's going on. But I think we've gone about this in a manner to educate the public as best we can. And I think I just appreciate that.
Can I just ask one more question? I just want to make sure I'm representing this correctly. So the way this is written is that the administration will, will prepare appropriate documents and resolution for the district to call an election in August 13th, 2019 to represent the project presented here tonight, not to exceed a project budget of $16 million. So I just want that to reflect in this tax impact that you have. You will see that the actual bond issue amount would be 16 million, not the thousand. What would be available for the project would be 16 million. Okay? So I just, I just want to make sure that it's, it's clear that the project cost is the 16 million. Depending on the ultimately final funding and stuff, there may be some, some finance charges or something that would take that a little bit higher than 16.
This is a voice vote or a roll call vote?
This will, you, this, you're not calling anything. There's no resolution. This is all you're doing is telling Matt to get stuff ready for next Tuesday.
Obviously next Tuesday, we'll have people.
Exactly. The resolution. So the technical part of, part of it is when we call for the vote, if somebody votes nay, or if we feel that somebody would vote nay on this vote, then you can have a roll call if you want. But either way, if there's a nay vote, it has to be said by myself that all in favor say aye. And if there's a nay and we're not aware of it, then I say, Bruce Fattifull say is a nay. Does that make sense? So that's technically how we're supposed to do it. We, the public needs to know where everybody sat.
So this is just a voice vote to solve this?
Yes.
Tonight.
The resolutions will all be.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
So we still in discussion mode. Anybody got anything else? So I'm just going to add here, I don't know where else we go. I think the public told us in the survey, they want to move forward. When I look at the 50% on all residents, I spent a lot of time looking at this thing. All residents came out to be somewhere in that 19 million range. Okay? We have done a nice job of getting this under control, yet accommodating, I believe, most of what the public is after. And if it's not in here, we have accommodated for it somewhere else. I like the softball idea because that's going to happen no matter how the vote comes up. Kind of, we have to get on that thing. When I go up the line and I look at the, the mass of voters that are non-parents, non-staff, that 50%, it is right at 16 million. Communication. And Matt, we have to give Matt instructions. I mean, we have to assist Matt in getting it to the public. So he can't be out there by himself going forward. But I think this personally, I have wanted to do a survey for so long, I could just taste it. I believe we got a really good survey telling us what we're supposed to do. So we are acting on behalf of what we are told in the survey. Yep, there could be a plus or minus factor, but it is a pretty clean survey for us to go. So if there's no more comments, then I'm going to ask. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All saying aye, carry.
So could I ask, could we get a copy of this report?
Yeah.
And I will need a copy because it needs to go in with the, it needs to go in with the official heads. So they will appear in a ride.
Thank you.
I'll have it on the superintendent's inbox up tomorrow and he can disseminate as soon.
So that was our only business item that we have and the only thing we approved on agenda. Do we have a title here? I'm hoping for David to adjourn. I have a second.
I'll say.
Second from Thomas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All saying no, carry.